Okay. Let's call this meeting to order. It's the Board of Supervisors from Warminster Township for Thursday, December 15th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and women and civilians and the people in Ukraine, please. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see everybody on this rainy night. I do have one announcement. We had an executive session previous to this meeting. We went over personnel issues, contracts, and a couple of litigation issues. I want to say to everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We don't think we'll see, I don't think we're having another meeting until after that.
So hopefully not.
Yeah. And, you know, everybody have a great holiday and all the other holidays as well. Let's not forget them. All right, and that's all I have. Kath, you got anything?
Just wanted to say, out of an abundance of caution, I'm not feeling well, so I'm in the back room here, but I can see and hear everybody. That's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. This is a sci-fi movie now. This is what we're all going to do. I think there's a show on Prime right now called Counterpart. This is the way management used to communicate with one another. We're on our way. All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few announcements for Park and Rec. A holiday house decorating contest is in full swing. Our judges have been chosen, but if you'd like to check out the homes entered in the contest, please visit the Warminster Township Park and Recreation Facebook page for a list of addresses. Good luck to all the participants and thanks to our judges. Also, the Christmas tree recycling is available at Warminster Community Park and Rec parking lot at 1100 Veterans Way between December 25th and January 31st. Please be sure to remove all decorations, including tinsel or garland. Also, on the, on the, our 20th Wine and Cheese Bingo event returns Friday, February 10th. Registration is available now through the township website, and Park and Rec is also looking for sponsors. There's a sponsorship flyer available too, if someone would like to sponsor the event. It's always, it's always sold out. It's always a good event, and Park and Rec's always looking for volunteers too for these events. Anyone would like to volunteer for the event, they're always a good one. And please visit the Park and Rec tab on the township website or call 443-542-8 for additional information. What else do I have for you, Mr. Chairman? I think that's all I had. One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to mention, and I normally do when there's a former supervisor in the room, was good to see Frank Feinberg in the room tonight. First time I've seen you in a room in a while, Frank. It's good to see you. Served with Frank on this board several years ago now, and Frank was always a first-class gentleman, always. Good to see you, Frank.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Janice, please.
I just want to kind of tag along with the Christmas lights. I love driving through Warminster, and everybody's got their lights up. Not my house yet, but it's coming. But it's been nice to see all the lights and everybody decorating for the season, so I just, I'm really glad to see that we're having a contest, so that's kind of getting some more people involved in, in just making our town beautiful. So thank you very much, everybody that's put the time, energy, and effort. It really shows. Thank you.
And Judy.
Hi, everybody. I want to let you know that it's a library user survey on the website. If you go to the website, the library definitely wants everyone to give their input of what they expect to use for resources at the library and what they're looking for, and, and help us to develop a good program for the library this year.
Is it? Okay. All right. Now, let's see. Not to slate anyone, I know that the other holidays are Hanukkah and Kwanzaa, and I'm sure there's a few others that I'll miss in between, but, what is the other one?
Bo-Kai Day.
Okay. So we'll move along, and we have our Parks and Rec Director here. Jess, come on up. I think Aaron's here as well.
Chris.
And Chris? Okay. So we just want to show you, this is one of the things that we're doing in our, the infrastructure meetings, as to how to spend the ARPA money to benefit the residents and for a long term. And one of the things would be some lighting, that some of our parks' facilities are in dire need of upgrades, and I'm going to hand the floor over to, to you, Jess.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. So we can go to the next slide. First of all, thank you for allowing us the time tonight. I know that you have a heavy agenda, so we'll be very quick. The recommendations that we're presenting are based on the requests and needs of existing organizations, field use expansion goals, and current safety standards. When considering adding facility lighting to new fields or making necessary repairs to existing lighting, it often makes sense to also consider bringing all facilities up to current standards. This will allow for continuity in both recreation services and maintenance considerations. That being said, this is our project overview. There are five separate parks that we're looking at. We want to enhance safety and user experience. We have some electrical services that need to be upgraded per some evaluations by electrical engineers. It will save energy utilizing LED technology, and also, we'll be using more focused lights to minimize the impacts on the neighboring communities. So at this point, oh, also reduce maintenance because everything will match. I'm going to turn over to Chris now, and he's going to go over some of the more technical aspects.
Okay. Thanks, Jess.
Thanks, Jess. Again, I'm Chris Green, Landscape Architect with Gilmore and Associates. We've been helping the township out with this project. Go to the next slide. The first park we'll look at is Werner Park. And what we're doing here, basically what you see on the screen, the red dots are the existing lights that are out there currently illuminating the fields. The green areas are the areas that we'd be concentrating the lighting on, and there, at Werner Park, there is existing lighting on all these fields currently. That, again, that's where the red dots are. The larger yellow dots are where we'd be proposing the new lighting to be. So what we'll be doing, the top right corner of the plan you see is a practice, football practice field currently, and there are four existing light poles there. They're about 35 feet in height, and they're on wooden poles as they exist now. We can actually light that whole area with one pole if we raise the height to 70 feet, which is a kind of recommended height for recreational lighting to make the best use of your lights and be able to focus them properly. So that's up in the practice field area. There's the football field and the softball field that overlap down at the bottom portion of the plan there, and we have about 10 existing poles currently that are out there now illuminating those areas. We can actually light those fields with 70-foot poles, again, with seven poles instead of the 10 that are out there now. And again, as Jess had mentioned, we'd be bringing these fields up to current standards for lighting, light levels out there, and uniformity ratios to make it safer for the users and more usable. So that's the overall plan for Werner Park. Go to the next one there, and this is the anticipated cost breakdown of the lighting improvements here. So the top line of $550,000 is for the actual light fixtures and pole bases themselves. There's also the electrical component that goes along with the project, again, upgrading panels, wiring conduit to serve the lights, as well as the engineering that goes along with that to prepare big packages and get things out to bid, and then construction observation as well. So we're over $900,000 anticipated on Werner Park.
Now, let's, let's let everyone understand that these cost estimates are not etched in stone. These are just that, estimates based on the plan, so this hasn't been out to bid and the materials and everything. It's, we're taking a conservative approach. We're not going to say it's only going to be a half a million dollars, $500,000, when in fact it may be $800. So I just want everyone to understand that these are not etched in stone, these costs. Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I ask a question back at Werner Park? Or do you want me to hold the questions till you're done with all of them?
We can do them part by part if that, that's fine, sure.
Is that okay? Well, I'm just looking at the diagram. I'm very familiar with that park. There's poles on, where it has the bottom left corner, the practice field on the, on the top right. There are poles along that parking, parking lot that light the field that's behind it that you're not, that you don't have highlighted, that's typically used by cheerleading, as well as the flag football team. Is there any intention of putting lights there as well?
Not as part of this plan that we have here. It's, the existing lights would remain as, as they are.
All right. So I have another question. Where it says playground, an existing light pole up there in the top left, that's right now being, I think it's gravel-based, it's used as a parking lot, correct? Yeah. Are we going to have on that pole that says playground, are you going to have lights facing the other way to light the parking lot up?
The, the focus of the lights on, on what we have numbers for now are just for the field areas.
Okay.
Not to say that we couldn't add additional
Yeah.
fixtures to those poles to light other areas as well.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. We can talk about that, because I know a lot of those poles have reached their life's end and they're ready to come down.
Yeah, one of them fell that was there.
One of the things to remember here, the same as the budget is not set in stone, we have, we can change all of this along the way. These are just preliminary
Correct.
ideas and preliminary numbers. So whatever you all decide with Mr. Scott, we can make those adjustments very easily. This is just getting these fields done, and we can talk about making those adjustments along the way. So just because it shows it this way here, if you all decide you want it a different way, we can absolutely make that up.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thanks for pointing that out, Jess. The other thing is that, and I know, Janice, you know this as well because you're over there, that field right now is dark.
It's not safe.
The lighting is horrendous over there, especially for a football field, so, yeah, it's
And when you're parked on the field at night, the lights go out, and you have to kind of guess your way down the field because all of them go out. So it's completely dark. There's nothing, there's, because the pole that came down that hasn't been repaired yet is the one that used to kind of stay on so you could see to get to your car.
Yeah, well, again, this is, these are renderings
It's a great reason for us to move forward and get this updated.
These are preliminary, and we'd be happy to adjust anything as you guys do it.
Right.
That's why we're presenting this year, so that we get together and give us that feedback.
Thanks, Jess. All right.
Okay, so the next park on the list is Monroe Park. And again, this is a park where, actually, the baseball field that you'll see in the middle, the top center of the diagram there, there is no current lighting there at that 90-foot baseball field now, so this will be all proposed new lighting for that field. The existing soccer fields, one and two, that you do see there, they have existing lighting. Again, the red dots represent the light poles that are existing out there, so they do have existing lighting that would remain. We would be adding the 70-foot poles again for the baseball diamond that are there, as well as replacing the fixtures, not the poles necessarily, but the, just the fixtures that are located at the tennis, skate park, and basketball areas there. So that represents just replacement of the luminaires in that location.
Okay. So they're the only ones right now from, from that project five years ago that's, that are not working? Just the ones in there?
Correct. So soccer one has new fixtures, and they were not working properly. We figured out that problem, they're now lighting up the night.
Very good.
So the existing fixtures that are remaining have already been
Okay. Thanks, Jess.
And the next slide is the cost breakdown for Monroe Park, which is right around $960,000 total for that location. The next park is Warminster Community Park. These are taking a look at the new Little League fields that have been installed, finished up last year, that are out there. There's no lighting there currently, so this will be all new fixtures for both of those baseball fields, and they would be able to be lit with those seven fixture locations that you see on the diagram there. Again, we're looking at 70-foot tall poles and upgraded to current standards for that The total breakdown on this, we're looking at about $640,000 total. Again, there's going to be a much less of an electrical service aspect here because it was upgraded with the park upgrades that happened over the past few years. The next one is Shemannic Park, and for this location, we're basically just looking at the football field that's currently there. Again, same idea here, the red dots are the existing poles that are out there now. There's, there's 10 existing poles that are about 40 foot in height, and we'd be replacing those with just four new poles, again, at the 70-foot height, to get our light levels focused on the football field. And our breakdown on this one adds up to about $475,000 for Shemannic. And our final location is Loud College Park. And this location, there, again, there's existing lights for the basketball and what's currently a tennis court, but will be transformed to a volleyball court, I believe. So we'd be replacing those lights, basically in the same locations that are there. These would just be 40-foot tall poles. Again, the 70-footer for the, the field sports. These are for court sports. We're looking at 40-foot tall poles for these locations, upgrading, again, just the volleyball and basketball court areas. And the next slide shows our cost breakdown for this site at about $250,000 for Loud College. And as part of this presentation, Andrew's here from Musco, who is the rep from the sports lighting manufacturer, who's been helping us out with putting some of these cost estimates together. He just has a little bit of information about his product and why we're kind of going with the, with Musco as the manufacturer of these type of lights.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, Chris, and thank you to the township for having us out here. Again, Andrew O'Connell, local rep here for Musco Sports Lighting. We're a global sports lighting company, been in business for 45-plus years. We've led everything from your local Little League field all the way up to the Olympics, so just wanted to touch on really the proposed lighting solutions for all the sites that Chris just mentioned. Our two main solutions are what is called our Light Structure System and our Sports Cluster System. Starting with the Light Structure System, so this is designed into what we like to call our five easy pieces. So this is all the way from the pre-cast concrete base, your galvanized steel pole. On that pole, you'll have an ECE, so all your electrical components, your, your remote drivers will be encompassed in there. And why that's important from a facility management and maintenance standpoint is because most of the times, especially with some of the wooden poles and HID systems you have out there, to troubleshoot or perform any type of maintenance, you actually have to go up to the bulbs and the drivers themselves, which at times can be costly, whether it's a bucket truck or a lift, and those can be costly to rent, or they can possibly damage the site. All of our boxes you'll see with the Musco logo are going to be 10 feet above grade, so all we ask you to do is get a step ladder, go up and check it, and 99% of the problems can be troubleshoot throughout that system. From there, you'll have the wire harness leading up to the LED fixtures themselves. There's a good little snapshot of what our fixture looks like. So the LED technology is great from an energy-saving standpoint and some of the features that goes along with it. But the biggest thing is for when we're trying to light a field for, we have two things in mind, the community and the athletes and the players on that field through performance and safety. Having a shield visor on this LED fixture is going to give us the ability to control spill and glare and eliminate any effect it will have on neighboring properties. The Sports Cluster, Cluster System, in this case, would be more applicable to the Monroe, where you have existing poles on your skate park and tennis courts. We refer to that as an SCR retrofit, and that's a system that we would install on non-Musco poles. Well, we're essentially putting those, those pieces we just talked about on existing poles, so you still have a new Musco box, new wire harness, and new fixtures, LED fixtures.
It's Andrew, right?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Andrew, I don't mean to cut you off. You're going way into the weeds, man. We have, we have a really, really busy agenda.
We'll wrap it up here, yeah, so.
Yeah, thank you.
It is impressive, though.
Yeah.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, and so the next slide, you'll see if you want to scroll down there, is just a system that is currently what you have out there, something that we installed at a high school in Pennsylvania by the name of Neshanami High School. And then the next one is an LED system that we put in for them a few years back. It really shows the difference in the light that is behind the field, spilling off the field, and the before and after. Gives you a good idea of what the cutoff could look like with the LED fixtures.
Yeah. Plus, high-pressure stadiums are pretty expensive to run. Okay. Great. Thanks, thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Sorry to cut you off.
No, no problem. Slow me down one year.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would assume that we would go back to the Infrastructure Committee and talk over these different options now?
That's correct.
And present, because I don't want the public to think, oh, my God, they're going to go spend $3 million.
No.
Right. We'll go back and discuss it and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors.
Exactly. I was going to get to that, but thanks, Mark.
They can choose what we want to do.
That's exactly what we want to do.
Yes, absolutely. We just wanted you to see the total picture.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, and these, these projects all need to get done, but obviously, we're going to have to do them in phases because we're not going to spend $5 million that we don't have. We have some. Hopefully, we get some more. But Jess, thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, we'll look forward to the next infrastructure meeting, which is probably, what, January time? Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we have some stuff to discuss.
Excellent, yeah. Let's go to Land Use Matters. Plumstead Manor LLC, 114 to 120 Evergreen Avenue, Conditional Use Application Hearing. Scott, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Stenographer here, no cursing.
Just wait for Bill.
Stenographer here, no cursing.
I saw that when I first walked in.
All right. Are you ready, Bill?
Thank you so much.
All right. This is the Conditional Use Hearing for the Conditional Use Application filed by Plumstead Manor LLC for 114 to 120 Evergreen Avenue, also identified as tax, tax map parcel numbers 49-18-72-1 and 49-18-79. They're seeking conditional use relating to sections 2202.3c and 2202.5. The zoning ordinance seeking to have on and off-site shared parking for, there's four parking spots that'll have to be off-site from one property to the other. Here, on behalf of the applicant, is Kelly McGowan.
Scott, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kelly McGowan, from the law firm of Obermayr representing the applicant this evening. Just by way of a brief introduction, and Scott, I would ask, and I will ask my witnesses to adopt any of my statements to the extent that they're factual as testimony. This is the Conditional Use Application to facilitate a land development, which is actually a redevelopment of parcels located on Evergreen. Currently, they're improved and have historically been used for residential uses, notwithstanding they are located in a C1 commercial zoning district within the township. This particular property does have frontage on Evergreen, that's its primary frontage. It also, however, has access to and is located immediately adjacent to property with frontage on York Road. Both of those properties, while they're not in common ownership, are both owned by and controlled by entities controlled by the applicant. So the application this evening, again, is conditional use. There are land development plans pending review in the township. Those land development plans have all the details with respect to the development. This evening, we're only speaking to the location of these four parking spaces. As Scott noted in the notice, there are two provisions of your zoning ordinance applicable. One relates to permitting shared parking. The second relates to permitting the location of that shared parking on the other property. Applicant previously obtained zoning relief to permit this development. It is a mixed-use development, first floor, commercial. Second floor will be three apartments, two two-bedroom apartments and one one-bedroom apartment. Applicant will provide testimony, both himself as well as Dave Horner, traffic engineer, each of which will testify to the specific requirements of your zoning ordinance. With that, I'd ask that both of the witnesses be sworn in.
Tom, you swear at test by God, Dave will be the first to be out.
Thank you, Dave.
First witness is Vince Crispino, who's an authorized representative of the property owner.
G R I S P I N O.
Vince, can you provide the board with your name, your business, and your business address, please?
Sure. Name is Vincent Crispino. This particular business is Plumstead Manor LLC. Address, 85 North York Road, Warminster, PA.
And you were here and just listened to the comments that I made to the board. Would you have any changes or would you doubt the facts that I provided to the board issue?
Yes, everything sounds correct.
Do you in fact own or does your family own additions to this property, multiple properties in Warminster Township?
Correct, yes.
Do you also operate a business in Warminster Township?
Yes, we do.
Okay, what is that?
Altamontes Market.
Okay. And where is Altamontes Market located?
85 York Road in Warminster.
Okay. And is that immediately adjacent to the property that we're discussing this evening?
Yes, it is.
I'd like you to identify, prior to the start of the hearing, I provided the board with four exhibits pre-marked. Vincent, I'm going to show you what we've marked as exhibit 8.3. Can you identify the plan and the property to the board?
Yes, this looks like the property Plumstead Manor, 114, 120 Evergreen.
Now, were these plans prepared at your direction?
Yes.
And the second property that I referenced earlier, the property on which we are looking to locate the four parking spaces, that property also referenced on this plan?
Correct.
And for E's, can we call it the top of the plan that runs on Old York Road? Vince, I'm going to ask you a series of questions related to the standards of the zoning ordinance. For how long have you operated the business and have you owned the properties in the township?
Altogether, that particular property, Altamontes, has been here since 1996, so 26, 27 years. The other properties in question have been probably around about the same time, in that 15 to 20-year range.
Okay, so fair to say you're familiar both with the township and the neighborhood in which the park is located?
Yes.
And this conditional use speaks to just the location of the, of these parking spaces. So when I ask you these questions, when I say the use, the use is actually the location of these parking spaces. Based upon your knowledge of the neighborhood, is the proposed use of the location of these parking spaces suitable for the character of the neighborhood and the uses of the surrounding properties?
Yes.
Is there anything about the location of these properties that's going to impair your existing use of this property or the proposed use of the new property?
No.
Is there anything about the location of these parking spaces that's going to adversely affect public health, safety, or general welfare based upon your knowledge of the neighborhood?
No.
And anything about these parking spaces that's going to impair, and this is an interesting one, the access to light or air to the adjacent property?
No.
Okay. All of the infrastructures are parking related only on that property, correct?
Yes.
Is there currently lighting located in the area of these proposed shared parking spaces?
Yes.
And that will be maintained in connection with the application?
Yes, will be maintained or upgraded.
Vince, the zoning ordinance also has some specific requirements in order to utilize shared parking. Number one, and we can see this on the plan, but you can confirm, these lots are physically adjacent and there's nothing separating these lots, correct?
Correct.
The ordinance also requires each property owner to enter into a written agreement confirming the shared parking operation. Do you agree Do you agree that your entities will enter into section agreement?
Yes.
The ordinance further requires, in connection with the spaces being off-site, that you'll enter into a license agreement, which will be renewed annually, providing continued use of those spaces so long as the use of the new property exists. Do you agree to that agreement?
Yes.
The proposed spaces are located in close proximity to that property line, correct?
Yes.
And will serve the non-residential use of that phase development?
Correct.
Vince, do you agree that you will consent to the conditions of this conditional use approval, consistent with your testimony, including a condition to enter into the required agreements and maintain these parking spaces?
Yes.
I don't have anything further for Vince, if the board has any questions.
I don't have any questions. Anybody have any question?
No.
It's going to be, first floor will be two unit, commercial units, and the second floor will be three apartment units. So, C1.
Do you have an idea what kind of businesses?
At this time, no. Whatever will be available to lease them out to.
Okay, thanks.
How high are the ceilings?
They should be 10 foot.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, I assume everything's in order from your end?
Yes, we issued a review letter on this. There are no issues. I think they addressed all the comments in our letter.
Right, that was my next question. You've addressed most of all the comments.
And I have one more witness who will provide just some brief testimony, technical testimony that will follow up on the remaining.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Vince.
Dave, can you also provide the board with your name, business, and business address, please?
My name is David Horner, H-O-R-N-E-R, president of Horner and Cantor Associates, a traffic engineering company. Business address is Hallerton, Pennsylvania.
Dave, were you retained by the applicant to prepare both a parking analysis and also prepare a traffic impact statement with respect to the proposed conditional use and development?
Yes.
I'm going to show you what I've marked as Exhibit A1 and Exhibit A2. For the record, are they, in fact, the letters that were issued by your office?
Yes, they are.
And in connection with your preparation of those studies, can you explain to the board what specifically you reviewed with respect to the plan and the proposed parking?
I can't. So, we prepared a brief parking demand letter, September 15, 13, 2022 is the date, and I think that was Exhibit A1, I believe. So, just being very brief, so what we looked at was to make sure that the parking demand would be able to be accommodated on-site. So, if we look at the two different uses, the 3,000 square feet of commercial space and the three apartment units combined, if they were to peak at the same time, would be about 10 spaces occupied during the weekday and about 13 on the Saturday. The fact is, they're complementary uses. The residential really peaks overnight, while the commercial space would peak during the day. So, it really would be less than that. So, my conclusion was, just trying to be very straightforward, my conclusion was that there's no issue with parking being accommodated on-site. Of course, having the four spaces, if the subject of conditional use, certainly helps.
So, Dave, to summarize your testimony, do you believe, based upon a shared parking analysis, adequate parking would be provided on-site, would be 15 on-site spaces? However, there's no adverse impact from having the four adjacent property spaces available?
Correct, yes.
With respect to Exhibit A2, your traffic impact statement, we referenced earlier the review letters. Were there specific requirements to be addressed in response to those letters?
There was. The traffic engineer, Carol Engineering, letter requested a traffic impact statement to indicate how we comply with those specific standards for the conditional use that has to do with traffic. So, I did prepare a traffic impact statement dated December 15, 2022, which does address basically the four items in that conditional use standard that have to do with traffic and access, and so I addressed them in that letter.
And to summarize that letter, starting with number one, did you confirm the proposed use, which is the location of the parking spaces, otherwise complies with all of the applicable regulations in Warminster Township?
It does, yes.
Did you also review the points of vehicular access and confirm that those access points, especially in relation to the location of these parking spaces, are adequate and will provide safe access?
I did, and it would, and specifically, the access is located on Evergreen to the south side of the property, which actually provides the proper separation with Cedar Street across the street, and therefore, is not going to create any congestion or any issues. And it does line up with the aisle into this and the adjacent site, so it does maximize that as well.
And did you also, at the township's request, reform a trip generation comparison between the existing use, which I'll note for the record is, to what used to be residential structures, in comparison to the proposed development?
I did.
Okay, and...
So, basically, the trip generation of the existing use is one or two trips in a peak hour because of the two houses. The proposed use would be about eight trips in the morning, maybe 22 trips, that's 11 cars in, 11 cars out, in the afternoon. But that volume of traffic is not going to create any issues that can be accommodated by Evergreen. And I would add, comparing it to the existing use is really not all that, we'll say, appropriate in that it's a C1 zone, so it's really, it's not generating any different traffic or more traffic than any other use within a C1 zone.
And finally, did you also confirm and analyze the plan to determine whether the proposed use, which is these parking spaces, will pose an unwarranted impact on traffic or create any congestion or significant adverse impacts?
It would not.
Dave, was there anything about your review of this plan or your review of parking that would lead you to a conclusion that there would be any adverse impact on public health, safety, and welfare as a result of the shared parking?
No, there would not be.
And all of your statements are made in connection with your license as a...
Professional, licensed professional engineer in Pennsylvania and a certified traffic, professional traffic operations engineer as well.
I don't have anything further for Dave.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Actually, no. I mean, the traffic study, I mean, depending on what type of business goes in there, if it's a professional business, might even be less. So, I don't have any questions. Mark?
Nope.
Kathy, you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Does that all close, as with this case, after my exhibits to be admitted? And thank the board.
So, just some minor cleanup. So, all four exhibits, A1, A2, A3, and A4, you're asking to be admitted?
Yes, please.
A1 being the, call it the park analysis letter dated September 13, 2022, A2 being the traffic impact statement dated December 15, 2022, A3, the land development and lot consolidation plan, and A4 is the parking exhibit.
Correct.
At this time, is there, as this is a public hearing, is there any comments from the public? All right, at this time, we can close the hearing, and if you so proceed, the board action is in order.
Okay, so the action, it would be to motion to grant conditional use?
Correct.
For the parking?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I see our emergency manager, Joe, had no comments or issues, correct, Joe? Okay. All right, any other questions from the board, from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
We're members, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to table 3B, the ordinance approving appointment of solicitor interest assessment, attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of unpaid real estate taxes and municipal claims for delinquent accounts. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the reason we want to table that is just to have a better look at what it is that we're going to approve. So, let's, any questions from the public, any from the board? Okay. Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And that also, we don't need a motion to table 5B, that just will come off the agenda. Thank you. All right. 3C, adoption of the 2023 Township Budget and Resolution 2022-18 for the 2023 tax millage and fees. Tom, would you like to proceed, or it will be John?
I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, at the last meeting, you authorized the advertisement of the 2023 proposed budget. That has been done, and accordingly, the board can approve the budget tonight for 2023, and the Resolution 2022-18 just sets forth what the millage is for each of the funds and the trash collection fee for 2023. And at this time, I would ask respectfully that the board adopt the budget and the Resolution 2022-18.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion from there.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Second? Okay, we've been through this a million times, the board. So, I'm sure, I don't have any questions. It's a balanced budget, there's no tax increase, and, you know, we're doing okay right now. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, so much unlike years ago. All right, being none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, and the motion to carry, 5-0. Thank you, that's, sometimes that used to go until midnight.
Oh, yeah.
That's what happens when you don't have a balanced budget. All right, very nice. We're trying to get to the, we're trying to get to the new business, gentlemen, please bear with us. All right, public comment. The occasional visit here, huh?
It was rare.
Rare, okay.
Putting to the patch, it was a rare place. The other eight times, I can't...
That's right, this year.
Bobby Loftus, Tax Collector. I just want to remind the residents that today was the last day for personal checks from now till December 30. After today, it has to be a cashier's check, a certified check, money order, cash. If it's cash, it has to be the exact amount. Soon as cash comes in, it goes out. I also wanted to remind anybody that I bill trash for, and they are senior citizens, age 62 or older, and live in the house, they only have till December 30 to ask for their $55 check back. Then I give the money back to the township.
Okay.
As of today, we have 100 people that haven't paid their township tax.
Out of 11,000, is it?
10,400.
10,400, that's incredible. Very nice.
As of today, we have two people that did not pay their lighting bill. One always pays the last day, so it looks like I'll lean one person for lighting, because they've never paid me. As of today, we have 80 people left to pay for trash. Now, even though you passed a zero budget, no increase, there will be an increase in some of the lighting. I met with Public Works Director today, and he did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Very, very pleased. We have nine lighting districts in Warminster. The largest increase in any of the districts is $3.88.
For the year?
For the year. That's not, you know, that's for the year.
Yeah.
Most of them, District 8, they're going to see a dramatic decrease over $12,000. District 9 goes up $3.01. District 7 goes up 3.88. District 2 goes minus 7.85. District 4 is minus 9.86. District 1, they have an increase of $1.16. District 6 has an increase of 39 cents. District 3 has an increase of $2.36, and District 5 has a decrease of $1,200. So, all the new lighting that they're putting in is really working. Sure, District 8 will be tickled to death when it goes down $12,000.
Yeah, well, that's...
That's impressive.
It's all LED.
Yeah, it's all the LED.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's really good, and they did a fantastic job. And this Andrew Adams, very nice. We worked really well together.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby. I'll pass that on to him. I'm thrilled with our whole staff we've assembled here. I mean, everyone is on the same page and working together now. It's really, really, really a pleasure to not have to dive down into the weeds, and we know we have competent people doing the job. Thank you.
So, we still have two weeks to go, so with only 100 left, I think our leans will be very good this year.
Excellent. Thanks to the residents.
Thanks to the residents.
Thank you.
Yes. All right?
Yeah, great job. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll see, what, about eight months, the rare appearance?
I was on an island, and I looked at my phone, and it said Loftus made a rare appearance. I'm thinking, oh, my God.
I missed that, but I thought it was pretty funny when I saw it.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, and have a great, have a great Christmas, too.
Thank you, everybody have good holidays.
Yes, great, thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, let's move along. Consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated 2022. Authorized proposal for design and construction management of the library... Yeah, you forgot the date.
Forgot the date.
We have it, we all looked at it. Authorized proposal for design and construction management of the library ADA bathroom, which is well overdue. Renovations for Raphael Architects with a quota of $23,980. That's for the design. Consider 1270 Murns Road, release number 12, final from the escrow account in the amount of $83,449. And Resolution 2022-20 authorizing application to the Pennsylvania Financing Authority with Warminster Municipal Authority for American Rescue Group Plan Act, which is ARPA. PAH2O funds with 50% local matching for stormwater management project, stormwater basin improvements. And lastly, Resolution 2022-21 authorizing application to the Pennsylvania Financing Authority with Warminster Municipal Authority for the American Rescue Plan Act, and is that for a different project?
Yes, sir, one is for the basin at Tennyson, the second one is for the basin at Whittier.
Whittier, okay.
Since we own the both, we are.
Right.
But the resolutions need to come from the Board of Supervisors, and...
Yes.
They're going to take care of the rest, including the match.
Yeah, I can explain this a little better, but we'll need a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay, so these two resolutions that are part of the application for, to go to Harrisburg, there's a lot of ARPA money, as we call it, the, I read it once, I'm so used to, Authority for American Rescue Plan Act, that's ARPA. So, the state's been sitting on piles of money, haven't been releasing it, so now they're going to start putting it out there for us. This is, we knew this was going to take a long time, that all the money that came from Washington, once it got distributed, we knew it was going to take a while to get out into the, into the public domain where we could spend it. These two, these two resolutions are part of the application. Everybody knows we have a huge stormwater issue problem here in Warminster. We have a couple of projects that are just about shovel-ready to take them from 25-year flood detention basins, which 25-year floods, we're having one right now, as we sit here. That's, this is a 25-year storm event. They happen every other week now. We're going to try to redesign them with infiltration and other aspects to make them detain 100-year storm flood, which are less frequent, but they're nonetheless more devastating when we have a lot of flooding problems here. So, this is an application to Harrisburg, because we already have these, these two basin retrofits on the books to start. The WMA, they have designs, we're ready to go with them. This gives us the opportunity to get even more money from Harrisburg to complete these projects.
Did I hear the second one? Was that Whittier Basin?
Yeah.
Wasn't that basin just done not terribly long ago?
I haven't seen what they're proposing to do yet, so I don't, it sounds like some additional...
Yeah, they're going to take it to the 100-year.
Right now, all the basins that are from back when these bases were put in...
But this one here was done eight years ago, maybe?
Yeah, we did, we fixed Whittier, they must be doing additional improvements.
Yeah, there's, there are additional improvements.
I thought it was fixed at that time, that's why, when you mentioned...
They're never fixed completely. As soon as, as soon as you get a couple...
You spent a lot of money on that.
Well, as soon as you get a couple storms and they fill in with sediment, then they're no longer, you know, they have to be maintained. You can always fix them, but if you don't maintain them, which was always the problem here in Warminster, they were never maintained. So, then you have to go back and basically start over. It doesn't take long for sediment to collect in a basin.
That's a shame, we spent some money over there in the not-too-distant past.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure exactly what they have. Alls I know is that these are small projects, because you can get up to, what was it, 20 million or something like that? million or something like that? These are, these are much smaller projects. We have a couple that we, this got sprung on us very late. We weren't aware of this. The applications are due on the 20th of December, which doesn't give you much time. That's why we're going for projects that we already have budgeted in our capital. And if we can get, we can get Harrisburg to pay for half of them through the ARPA Act, why not? You know?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, I talked to Tom and Ken today a little bit. Part of that money, there's an attachment or a condition that has to be green infrastructure for stormwater. Most of the money is focused on water and sewer systems, but there is a component for stormwater. Part of that is, based on my staff, you know, other townships applying, it has to have like a bioretention component, infiltration component, groundwater recharge is probably, you know, something to.
Very important.
So, those bases were just your conventional basins. That's why there's another basin you guys are working on that doesn't meet the eligibility requirements. You have to have a green component. So, if you want to do a vegetated bioretention swale, or you want to dig out the basin and have infiltration, those are your classic, when I was designing a few years ago, they're your standard basins that last for a while. So, they're probably upgrading that. I think we have a meeting tomorrow, so I'll get more information. Tom and I can update you on the scope of what they're doing. But it's not eligible if you don't have one of those components. There's a lot of stream restoration projects as well that I think is something for the.
I think the municipal authorities applied for them once, that we were turned down, but I think, well, Frank can speak to that, he's the chair of the municipal authority. But I believe we're going to put in again for, as part of this, for stream bank restoration, which is, you know, right now, we're cutting away.
If it addresses water quality, that gets put up to the top.
Yeah.
That's the simplest way.
That just rang a bell for me, because that Whittier was a pretty big job.
Well, that Whittier was just controlling peak runoff, so it's.
I think we had to take a front loader over to get the job so pretended out of the basin at one point. The job was a nightmare.
So, I had this question with our engineers over at the municipal authority, because I, I sit on that board as well, and one of the things that I asked them, they were going to restore, what was it, Tennyson to 20, 25? They were just going to put it back to the way it was. And I said, well, we need to really look at this from an engineering level, because we wanted to infiltrate, because recharge is a problem, especially, you know, not so much right now because of the other issues from the Department of Defense, but recharge into the aquifer system is really important, so you don't deplete the aquifer of its, of water resources. So, we're going to look at coarser material, dig down the bedrock, and then fill with coarser material so it'll infiltrate into the aquifer. It's, this is a bedrock aquifer, fractured aquifer system, so it's a little more complicated than a sandbox like that in South Jersey. So, I think they're really worthwhile projects to apply for. We're in competition with the rest of the state for all these funds, so hopefully, if you would like to write to your senators and your, and your representatives, state reps, to just recommend that they support this project for Warminster Township, these projects, it will help. I know people don't pay attention, and they don't write to their senators and congressmen at the state level that much, but if we can get some support behind us and the township through letters to our representatives in Harrisburg, it does weigh in quite, quite heavily. So, it's an opportunity for the township not to exhaust our capital budgets, because John keeps a tight rein on them, which is a good thing, that's, that's his job. But this would help, this would help immensely. So, we would pay for half. Right now, we have them budgeted for the whole 100%, so if we can pay for half and have the state pay for the rest, it's a win-win for both of us.
I know this is consent agenda, and I'm sorry to drag this out. I just want to draw two distinctions. The ARPA money we're talking about in this instance is Pennsylvania's, not ours.
Right.
Not the one we have in the bank. This is Pennsylvania deciding how they're going to spread some of their, some of theirs out. The second thing is, the projects are going to be done by WMA, and so they would be dealing with the matching end of it, not Warminster Township. But we own both properties still, so we have a part to play in this. So, we'll be working with them, and Mr. County's office and myself, and we'll be working with Tim and Dalton and their engineers on these, on these applications over the next couple of days. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Just a reminder that, and the board knows this, but to everyone else out there, we are co-applicants to the, to the NIPD's stormwater permit, so this actually gives us, it helps us actually in acquiring funds to, to deal with the stormwater issues we have. All right, any other questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right. Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, I'd ask for a second, to adopt the bill list dated December 15, 2022, in the amount of $1,42,752.34, and the supplemental bill list dated November 30, 2022, in the amount of $937,283.85, to bring a total of $1,980,036.19.
I'll second. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. John, if you will, can you make this, we know you do a great job, and we always have our eyes on the, on the numbers.
I'll try and set a record.
Please do, because there is something that we have some people in the, in the back waiting to.
So, real quick, I'm just going to go over the general fund through the end of October. The numbers I'm about to read out, these don't include the one-time revenues, like the ARPA money you're talking about, because that would skew everything of 3.4 million in this year that wasn't in last year. I also back out the tan, other transfers and everything like that, so we are looking at operational one year to operational the next year. Revenues are up 378,000 compared to last year. Some of the positives, EIT's up 495,000, which is 13%, which is actually doing better than the county, we just had a meeting last week. The average for the county is only up 11.9%, so we're doing better than other surrounding municipalities. Real estate taxes, thanks to Bobby's efforts, they're up 56,000, with only 1% through the end of November that's still outstanding. Business privilege tax and mercantile are up 158,000 and 113,000 this year compared to last year, and I think that's just businesses getting back up and running, which is good.
Right.
The one thing that looks bad, but I think it's more of a trend to the normal, transfer tax through the end of October was down 318,000, which is already over budget still of 95,000. So, what I did a quick analysis of the last two years, last year we were almost one, at 1.3 million, we only budgeted 750,000. This year, through the end of November, we're at 1,150,000 with an increase in budget to 825. So, between these two years, we're looking at 865,000 more in transfer tax than we actually expected to come in. So, we are doing well. There was a big sale in November that kind of pushes everything back to matching the prior year, but, and the thing about the transfer tax, it's hardest in the budget. You never know what's going to happen. You don't want to overestimate that, and then find yourself in a hole because you thought that sales were going to happen, it never did.
Right. And that, you really have to do a statistical analysis of that over years to really see what's going on.
Within the budget, I am keeping track of how many properties are sold per month with what we receive. So, there's a four- or five-year trend of monthly receipts and number of properties sold.
Okay.
Looking at the expense side, expenses are down 5% compared to last year. The biggest one is the police MMO. Last year, we switched the way we funded the MMO, so that is actually down 783,000 compared to last year. So, that's the biggest decrease of any expense line item. Everything else seems to be tracking pretty normal. We're at 90% of expenses compared to budget this year, we were at 88% last year, so we are kind of following the normal trend on that.
Right. And, and let's explain the MMO. It's, it's, it's because we're using the correct way to fund that.
It's, we're recognizing the increases and losses immediately instead of smoothing it out over a couple of years.
That's correct. Right. So, rather than just paying the interest, we're actually paying in to the pension fund.
Yes.
So, then our liability, our minimum obligation goes down.
Yeah.
So, it's not that we're paying less, we're paying what we're required to pay into the.
Until the next valuation, we'll see.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, the market's down, so the MMO might go up.
Yep.
I mean, if it doesn't rebound by the time we get our next valuation. So, all right.
The only other thing I have to do is I have to thank my daughter Lydia for the time. She gave me my Christmas present early, so.
Ah, very nice.
She asked me where it's meeting, so it could be on TV, so I'm taping it so she can say it.
Very nice, very nice.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome, John. Thanks, John. All right, so, we're going to move to new business. There is no unfinished business, and I want to move this to the top, because we have some people in the back that I want to, I'm sure people in the neighborhood see them all the It'll be line item E in the new business. It's the consideration of a tentative agreement with the Warminster Township Police Benevolent Association for a new collective bargaining agreement for the period of February 1, 2023 through January 31, 2027. And I have to say, this is six weeks early, and I'm thrilled to death that our officers sat down with us and, and had an open and honest dialogue and got it done. I, my congratulations to you guys. Somebody want to come up? Thank you. Come on, John, come on up and.
Mr. Chairman, how are you?
I'm wonderful, John. How about you?
How are you, John?
I didn't hear why I was coming up.
Hey, John.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, I want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, I was on that negotiating committee, and Kevin was there, and Casey was there, and we sat down, and, you know, there was a few rough spots, as always in a negotiation, but, but you guys recognized what our situation was, because there was no hidden agendas, there was no, this is the way it is, we presented it, you presented your side, we presented our side, and you guys really did help us. The police department and in ratifying this contract last night really helped us make a, a, a really positive effort to have a sustainable police department for the foreseeable future. And I, and I applaud you guys for that, I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, you know, so if you like, we can, motion to, is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Kathy, second.
Yeah, any questions or comments? Questions from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
And I, and I'd like to say right now, I know this was, was a question that came up several times, and, and I told you what our plans were. So, as of now, this contract's been approved. You guys ratified it, we approved it. Thank you very much, and we do now tell, or authorize Tom to move forward with the hiring of the four new officers. So, Chief Donnelly, you'll get, you'll, you'll get a direction from Tom, yes. And we appreciate everything that you guys did for us and everything you do for us in the community, we really do.
Thank you.
And John, tell us about the beards.
It's a fundraiser for No Shave November. We extended it through December. It's being, we're conjoined with the Centennial School District, and the Centennial School District is identifying families in need, and the police department is going to help buy them presents and distribute them to those families. I think we raised about $4,000 that we donated to the Centennial School District for that purpose.
Is there, is there a way that the public can donate? I mean, because I, quite honestly, I remember you talking about it, but we, I was so busy, I didn't.
I would have to call the Centennial School District and ask that question, I don't know.
Okay. Well, we can put that out on our website. I mean, is it still going on through the end of December, right?
It's still going on through the end of December, and I'm not sure what stage they're in. I'm still waiting to hear from them, because we had hoped to go in uniform with them to help distribute the gifts, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We're still waiting to hear back from them as to what the next step is.
Okay. Something that we, I think we might want to let the news agencies, because there's always other police departments that are on there doing the same thing. It would be nice to get you guys some recognition.
And we're hoping Southampton's going to join as well, because I know they share that district, so.
Okay. Yeah, well, if you can get us some information, we'll get it on our website, and, you know, hopefully we get you some more donations.
All right, we'll do that. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, proposal for building slabs removal at Shenandoah Woods. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the houses at Shenandoah Woods, as we all know, are coming down. It's going to be, they're all going to be down very shortly, and the next step is, the houses are removed down to the slab, it's on slab construction. So, the question is, when do we take out the concrete that the houses were built on? And so, during the last month or so, the contractor who's out there now, Fritz Benke, Benke Records, they made a proposal to the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to take that next step, to remove the concrete from the 199 slabs for a price just south of $300,000. And after consideration by the RDA and the Township Council and the RDA Council, we've come to the conclusion that this is, this is, we can consider this, and the RDA can consider this to be a proper work, work order, work change, a change order to the contract. We've run into a bit of a, of a hurdle unexpectedly, that the Bucks County Conservation District has advised us and the RDA that we need to get a permit from them, what I'm just going to call generically, and Craig can correct me if I'm wrong, an earth disturbance permit. Even though they're going to kind of just like shave the concrete off the gravel, toss it in the dumpster, it's in the driveway. So, instead of being able to authorize the contractor as soon as possible to proceed, we're going to have to wait for a little bit while they review, while the Bucks County Conservation District reviews our permit application, which we'll be assembling with Craig's office and the RDA. So, it's good news, not great news. Hopefully, the contractor will still be available, with this all said and done. Jeff Darwick from the RDA the other day said, they're still going to be, they think they're going to be available for at least the next 30 days. So, if we can get something while they're still mobilized, approved, and underway, so when we put this on the agenda, it was a little happier than it is now, but it's still pretty good news.
Yeah, we're going to try to expedite the, the general permit, so we'll, we'll see with that, you know, I'll work with Craig on that. We don't want to have to, the object was not to pay, pay another $20,000, $25,000 mortgage fee for all the equipment that has to come back out.
Right.
And we, and we had a demonstration with the Conservation District there and the DEP, I believe the DEP was there, and they saw how they removed the concrete, and there's little to no earth disturbance. The, the retention basin down at the bottom of the, of the old Shenandoah Woods does not have any silt or sediment in it after heavy rains. These guys did a fantastic job. Message from Jeff Darwick the other day when we had our meeting, he was thrilled that we actually got these contractors, because they did a phenomenal job out there. And, and, you know, hats off to the RCO. But, yeah, they did a wonderful job, and they saw how they removed the slabs, they kind of just, it's like a sandbox, they kind of just break them out and lift them out, and there's no disturbance of the earth around them. We are not regrading or adding any soil amenities, so I'm not even sure why we need an earth disturbance permit, but we'll cross that bridge in the very near future. So, you know, this guy did a great job, and this is the change order, we saw the numbers, what was it, $289,000 or something like that, Tom?
Yes, sir.
So, is there a motion to, to approve the change order for the Shenandoah Woods slab So is there a motion to approve the change order for the Shenandoah Woods slab removal?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Second. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
From the public? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, $289,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought the number was. Thank you, Tom.
Alright, as we move along, Resolution 2022-19 for Appointment of Barry Iseton Associates Incorporated as a Uniform Construction Code Third Party Agency for Administration and Enforcement. And as we all know, Keystone has removed themselves from Warminster Township, and we were lucky enough to find another company that does, from what I understand, an incredible job at managing license and inspections, things like that. So...
Thank you, Board Chair.
Yeah, introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, Mike Catalia. I'm the Operations Manager of Barry Iseton Associates. I'm a local guy. I live in Jamison, so not too far from here. I've been Warwick.
Nice.
Been managing the area since 2015. Started out with two smaller towns, New Britton Borough and Newtown Borough. Now I'm managing well over 15 municipalities in Bucks and Montgomery County. Newtown Township, Lower Makefield, Yardley, Lower Southampton Township, Hilltown, and then it goes on. They seem to pop up every day lately. So we have a staff of 16 people out of our Furlong office, so we're right at the Heritage Center where the Cancer Center is in Furlong. So we're right up Stone Throw up York Road. We have administrative support. We have floodplain managers. We kind of are one-stop shop, which is nice. We bring our model to a lot of the townships because we really move you into the 21st century by using programs, software, and getting things, use the technology to make your job easier and ultimately the residents and the business owners a lot easier to apply for permits and communicate, which always seems to be the number one problem that arises when coming with code enforcement is communication. Our staff is readily accessible, whether we're staff in the office or we're out on the road. Emergencies, we work with the police and fire departments, so 24/7 coverage. Case like a car, we go into a building, a building collapses, or if there was a natural disaster, our team is ready to respond. So last year during Hurricane Ida, we deployed multiple teams. We had flooding and tornadoes going on. So talk about, one end of the county was flooded, the other end, we got wiped out by a tornado. So that was definitely interesting. So we appreciate the offer and the opportunity to come, you know, get things moving. You know, we're ready to go. Our team's in place, and that's about it.
Yeah, one of the things, if you don't mind, Tom, if I may, I know I tend to cut you off a lot, don't I?
Not at all.
Chairman, he does the same to me.
Does he? Okay, so it's...
Hasn't happened here yet.
Alright, well, one of the things we wanted to make sure of is that we'll be adequately staffed at the LNI. And then I understand we're going to move into the 21st century, actually, with, we're going to digitize things and make it easier for the residents to make payments for their permits. And are they going to, so are they still going to have to come in to apply for their permit, or can they do that online?
So all the forms are going to be available online. They'll be PDF writable.
Excellent.
So they'll be able to download them, and the email address will be right on the website. They can just, they can save it right to their desktop, fill out their, they have big plans, obviously.
Right.
But with that said, is we digitalize all your plans to make sure they're PDF. So the township will have a record of them. That's where we really are different from the competition. We require them to be PDF submitted as well, like the giant plans, so you don't have millions of rolls shoved into a back room that you'll never use. That's a huge thing.
I think, I might be wrong in this, but I, just for the edification of my colleague over there, the drywall finisher, PDF, I think that's portable digital format.
See, I was talking about it before the meeting with the others, that I'm old school. I need a permit for a shed. I want to walk in LNI and say, I need a permit for a shed. I need a form.
Right.
We'll have it for you.
And he...
And there's a lot of people that...
He got the joke. There's a lot of other people. We just want to make sure that everyone can be served by, you guys will serve the community.
Absolutely.
And I don't get done work till 3:30, so I'm coming at 4 o'clock. I mean, knocking on the door, is somebody going to be there?
Yep, we'll have it staffed.
So in the contract, it would be clear that the township would own that database, not his.
Township always owns the database. We use your software to upload everything.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's about time, because I've been asking this question for probably 15 years, is why can't we just, it's so much easier to apply for things online digitally. Especially if you know what you're doing, you know, like a shed is five feet from the property line, or I assume it still is. Actually, I'm certain of it, but, you know, if you know what you're doing and you have simple drawings, just upload everything, right?
And we work with the public, like if they're not sure or need some guidance, you know, that's going to be the big thing. We also have a portal we're working on with Tracer to get a complaint portal. Not that that's always the best thing, but complaints file in, it's a lot easier if the residents and people can go through the portal, type in their data, and then it gets sent right to us directly. This way, there's a digital footprint of that. They can upload pictures and those type of things. So it actually is a quicker response than it is somebody calling. And you got to get through the story, and then there's like a whole other things, and they tell you the backstory, and you know, just kind of, that's the big thing. And any, all the communities deal with it, with people's clutter and, you know, messy yards and things like that. And we take the more proactive route where when we're driving around doing inspections, be like, oh, what happened here, you know? Like, you know, and it's typically, that's not new. It's been, you know, it's been growing. So we understand that you guys have those needs too, so we would address that. We have staff with that.
Well, that was my next question, and I know that we've talked about this extensively as far as code enforcement, you know, we, there's, we were really lacking in that department, and you guys will certainly enhance that for us, correct?
Absolutely. It's everywhere too. So it's, some towns are just a little bit more dynamic than others. And we're not here to drag people into court. We're just here to get compliance. Whether we send a nice letter, we track them down, you know, on the phone number or something like that, just try to get compliance. You know, recently, we had that elderly lady, her husband, that just passed. It was during the snows, last year we had some snow. Her sidewalk wasn't shoveling. We're like, send the letter. I'm like, well, let's find out what's going on. Here, the husband died, you know, while shoveling snow. So like, that's kind of not what you want to do, because they'll probably show up here.
Send a violation, right?
You know what I mean? Like, kind of find the root of the problem. Then you have your habitual offenders, but you have to balance it. You educate the public. You give them access, and that's a huge thing that we're seeing throughout the municipalities. The fact that we give you access to us, and somebody says, you know, you don't get home until 3:30. Hey, I'm pouring these footings from my deck on the weekend. Can you stop by? Absolutely. You know, we'll stop by. There's somebody in the area. We'll come look at it. Just because you're a weekend warrior, doing something at night.
The ones that are pouring on the weekends, they're the ones that don't want to see you.
That's right. That's right.
I was trying to be nice, you know, but like...
Well, one thing we discuss, I know this isn't you, it's us, that we'd like to start seeing permits posted in windows.
Yeah, absolutely.
How the township got away from that, but...
Is that a code requirement?
They're supposed to be posted, keyword, supposed to be. We print them out on orange paper, or when we have them electronically, we tell them, hey, you need to print this out on visible paper.
And post it in your window or door, whatever.
Yeah, we've just gotten away from enforcing that.
Yeah.
Pass over your town.
Yeah, it happens, unfortunately. And we always tell them, you could tell them, do you blue in the face sometimes? Well, it's an active project, it's a little easier. You're there often.
Right.
You know, with somebody, it's like they're doing a roof, those roof things. They come in for the permit, but you already know the dumpster's in the driveway, right? So as soon as they pay, that roof's stripped and gone. So you have those things.
Yeah, well, that's great, and I think we should get back to that.
Absolutely. Makes his job easier.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It will make your job easier.
And if they call you, you know, sometimes they never come to us. They go right to you and say, you know, this person's doing this. They have a permit, you know?
Right.
At least you'll have an answer.
Absolutely, great. Well, thanks, Mike. Any other questions?
Nope.
Tom?
Thank you.
Lisa, do you want to come up?
I'm good. I want to get him out of here. He has a time commitment.
It's okay.
Actually, Mike, I don't have any questions for you, but I just want to let the board know that what we're doing tonight is we're designating his company as the official entity that's going to handle our building permits. That will include the building code enforcement and management of the building code, the mechanical code, which is the HVAC, the plumbing code. All those things are in the state building code as it gets amended every few years. And so these guys are certified to do so. Additionally, they're going to be dealing with the property maintenance code enforcement stuff, as we've been alluding to in the last couple of minutes. That is the, that's in the township's property maintenance code. It's not a state code. It's ours. We amend it from time to time, and looking forward to having them get involved with some of the things that we were having trouble getting moved on over the, at least the past year that I've been here. Some of the commercial spots along York Road, Street Road, lunch wagons, T-shirt stands, making sure that, for instance, the CVS, the very CVS locations are not turning into places that we really don't want to say that they should be better kept than they are.
Thank you, Tom. That's my pet peeve, that gang.
Right.
They were given three prime locations in this township, and you drive by there and they look like slums. It's a disgrace. You drive up to the one in Warrington. That's immaculate. Why the three in Warminster aren't maintained? I mean, they're maintained up to code, but they're a disgrace, in my opinion.
I'm all aware of the issues, trust me. I frequent two of them.
Yeah, and there's other, there's other locations. So it's not just residential. It's also the commercial spots. And we've had difficulty getting that, getting that paid proper attention to. So those are the things that they're going to be doing. Mike and his coworkers are also going to be working with Joe Velton on the fire inspection program. They also provide the fire inspectors, so they'll take over for what Keystone had been doing in that regard. And finally, they will be assisting Brian Mechanic, our zoning officer, as needed. But Brian will maintain the authorization over the zoning stuff, the zoning permits and the zoning hearing board applications. But Mike and his guys have agreed that if needed for assistance, to go look at stuff, help him track stuff down, that they'll be willing to do so. So we are reinventing this department, this, over the course of last meeting, this meeting, and in the weeks to come. Starting, we're going, we're going in there tomorrow afternoon.
And I just want to introduce Caitlin Mess. She's our Municipal Services Manager. She handles the zoning, the land development, that side of stuff, so...
Okay, welcome, Caitlin.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Kathy motions. I'll second it.
Second, okay, alright. Any other questions or comments from the board? From the public? Alright, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Welcome, Mike. Caitlin, thank you.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Same to you. I know you got your work cut out for you down there. Things are a little messy.
Not a problem.
Alright, thanks. Alright, Part C, Consideration to Authorize Development of Credit Card Policy for Fees or Usage. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, currently, we don't have a credit card user fee program, and so when we get charged by the credit card companies for letting our customers at the golf courses and everywhere else use their credit cards, we pay, you pay that fee. So we're going, we're asking the board to let us develop a policy to pass that on to the customers themselves.
I'll move.
Sounds reasonable.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I guess we can quote the number that it cost us last year. We'll just say two police cars. How's that? We paid in credit card fees. What did we pay us for two police cars?
Well, yeah, probably, it was eighty-two.
Eighty-two thousand.
And add about another sixty grand, seventy grand.
Alright.
Really? Wow.
So one and a half.
Yeah.
On, without the, the lights and whatnot, fresh from beans, it would be what?
Right.
Without the lights and the computers and the shield and the paint.
Not fit out, yeah.
No paint, no seats.
There you go. Yeah, but still in all, it's still, it's still $82,000 that, you know, we can always use in our budget.
Yep.
So any questions from the board?
No.
From the public?
I just switched my credit cards over to do that, but I am not charging the customers yet.
John, you got to come up. One, this will be, will this count towards your...
No, I got, I got...
Nice try.
I just, John Pror was 674 Joseph Avenue. I just had that, my machine's just redone. And I have, it actually has two ways of doing it. I can do it the old-fashioned way and get charged, or it can, you can flip it over and then the customer can pay the fee.
Right.
So, and everybody's doing that according to the person that did our machines.
That's correct.
It seems to be the wave.
That's right.
It wasn't legal back, I guess, years ago. Mastercard and Visa said, no, you can't charge a fee. But it's getting to the point where everyone's doing it. So it's getting switched over. So there's companies out there that are doing it too.
And keep in mind...
A lot of companies stopped using, wouldn't take cards anymore if they had to.
It get costly. Look what you're saying. How many police cars, things like that. It adds up.
Yeah, and the same thing, I mean, I have that same setup in my business as well, and, you know, it's it's just the way business is going because the fees, oh, and that's what I wanted to say, we are not just going out and Lisa's doing a great job in finding the right, the right company to keep our fees as low as possible. We're not just going to say, okay, Mastercard, five points, you got it. You know, we're not doing that.
Right.
We're going to keep it at two points or as low as we can get it, so...
I got you.
But, yeah, the residents shouldn't be paying that, especially those that don't golf.
Absolutely. Alright.
Thanks, John.
See you later on. Be back.
Alright, okay. Well, we're looking forward to it, John. I tried more.
I know.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Alright, and lastly, we're, we are going to ask our township solicitor to appear at the January 11, 2023 zoning hearing board meeting in reference to 700 York Road. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. We talked about this in the executive session, so I don't know that we have to have any discussion on it. Right, is that correct?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, alright, so we're going to just call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Okay, we took care of the police, and again, I thank the police department, negotiating team, and the police department for allowing us to continue to fund the police force and keep the, the, maintain the number of staff we have there. So thanks very much. Okay, professional reports. Tom, you're up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I just want to briefly go over some of the points from my Township Manager's 2023 Budget Message. We've adopted the budget, but a lot of, a lot of the discussion that we've had in this room over this year is represented in there. And there's two things that I just want to touch on. The first is how we, how we're able to spend money on capital improvements. Because we saw Jess's great presentation today. We're talking about improvements at the township facilities that'll, that'll be there for years and years to come if we're able to do it. And because we have an opportunity with the American Rescue Plan Act money, the ARPA money, and with the loan that the board took out a couple of years ago from the Delaware Valley Financing Authority, we're putting those funds within the, within the capital fund to make these generational investments in the township facilities. The type of investments that will attract people, families that want to live here, businesses that want to locate here and stay here. And I think with the, with the street paving, with the, with the improvements to the curb ramps that we're going to see, with the improvements we're going to see at the park with the lights, the removal of the blight at Shenandoah Woods, the biggest blight removal project, I guarantee you, in the, outside the city of Philadelphia and still within the Fort County region. And these strides that you've been able to make on the heels of very worrisome times with regards to pandemic and social unrest and insurrection, how all that's going to affect the economy. Well, as John's been documenting month after month, we're not doing too bad with the, with the, not only with what Bobby indicates for the property taxes, but also the earned income tax, the transfer tax, the market deal tax, the revenue from the golf course, it is still presenting itself. So we can, we can afford, I think, a little elbow room with regards to the capital improvements. Because we don't need to rely on those streams, those annual streams, to pay for them. Certainly, though, there will be a contribution to them as, as the board identifies in each budget as it goes on from year to year. Additionally, the only other thing I want to mention is the OPEB, the dreaded OPEB, the other post-employment benefits. These are the retirees that are eligible for the Medical Insurance Day, the retirees, the spouses, and eligible dependents. Right now, we're at $20 million liability. We've said it, we've talked about it many, many times this year, and I've only been here for a year. It seems like we talk about it all the time. We've had Steve Wiesner here. We've had consultants talk about it. The board followed Steve's advice, set up the OPEB Trust to help grow an account to not only actually pay those bills as they come due, but also to show that with the attention and the concern of this liability problem will impact the way the actuarials, the actuarial study, the next time this is done next year, and hopefully that number's going to come down because we're setting aside real money. And we're also putting in there with the contracts we get from the police... we're also putting in there, with the contracts we get from the police, hopefully the new one we're going to get from the, uh, from the American, uh, from, I'm just going to say Afmi, because I can't remember what Afmi stands for, that we're also going to get some commitment from them for their part as well. All those things taken together will have a positive impact on that liability, and it's going to, it won't come down as much as it will slowly, it won't increase with the, as rapidly as it has been, because now we're taking time, we're take, excuse me, we're paying attention to the problem, we have the opportunity to pay attention to the problem, and it's, it's showing how we're, we're to make, we're going to meet these commitments to the retirees and the future retirees, and at the same time, we're still going to be able to fund the regular parts of this, of the service departments year, year after year. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. I know that you guys have put a lot of work into the budget, and I want to thank all the department heads and all the consultants, uh, for their hard work on this, and, uh, I'm going to wrap it up with that, just by thanking you very much.
Thanks, Tom. And, um, not only, and this is very important, that, that, that loan we took out, I think that interest rate was what, one point two percent? Um, so, I mean, that was, uh, that was quite a, quite a fee. Um, we, for years, this, this township was borrowing from banks, paying an extra two and three points. Um, we brought in some interim managers, especially one in particular, Bill McCauley, that knew finance pretty well, especially in townships, and we took those loans out at the lowest interest rate you can imagine in the history, uh, other than free, and, um, and we're still spending that money wisely, is what we're doing. We, we, we were committed to that when we, uh, when we, when this board was put together, um, and we're still committed to that. We spend our money wisely, we're not just going to, uh, have someone come in and pound their chest and, you know, bang on the podium and, and tell us this is what we're going to do. Um, we're looking at the perpetuity of the township and public safety, and, um, and, and we spend our money wisely here, so thanks, Tom. And I want to, actually, I do want to thank our staff, as I said before, and I mean this sincerely. I think we've assembled, uh, and I say we, the board, have assembled probably one of the best administrative staffs in the history of this township, and, and it's, it's a thrill to watch them all work. I, I actually, I spend a lot of time here, don't I, Tom?
You do, sir.
Way too much, right, thanks Lisa, you're right. But, yeah, you did, I know.
You all did.
Now, and actually, it's, it's nice to know that I don't have to come in here every other day and, uh, get into the weeds, because I, I watch the interaction between our department heads and, and the manager and the assistant manager and our finance director and, and all the staff. I see a lot of smiles on people's faces now. When I first came in here, three years ago, there was, it was, it was like a morgue, um, and people identifying their, their, their loved ones in a morgue, um, and I knew there was a culture problem here that we, we, I, I have to thank the board, we straightened it out. Um, I can't say enough about our staff, so thanks again for, to everyone. Uh, all right, enough of that. Uh, where was I? Oh, Solicitor. Mr. Scott?
Yes, you always say, you, and you always turn and say that, it always looks like you're looking at me, and I always go to talk and go, wait, he's using Tom's last name, so I...
That's correct. Mr. Holber?
Yes, so, yes, uh, you got, uh, my report was in the packet, um, I shouldn't say my report, our firm's report was in the packet, uh, we talked about the few items we had, uh, issue in executive session. Uh, the only thing I would like to add tonight is, uh, you know, I would have said something, but I wanted to get him out of here. We work with, uh, Mike and his operation with Berry Ice and another one of our municipalities, uh, they've been working with us for now ten months now, uh, same sort of concerns as usually you guys had, had as far as the code enforcement, this council also had, um, they've had nothing but great comments over the last ten months about what the work they've done, and I mean, I think one of the biggest things they were looking forward to was someone driving around, going through the town, being proactive, and they're really seeing that now with Mike and his team, so.
Great.
We think you guys got someone, you know, great behind you, I mean, just an example, he said they'll be on call twenty-four, seven, uh, I'll be in court with them in the morning, where they were called out at midnight on Saturday night to go check out, uh, a business that was, had multiple code violations, so. They'll, they'll be able to do things, you know, we think, so it's been a great work. But other than that, I would just like to say, you know, everyone be safe, have fun, happy holidays, enjoy the new year, and we will see everyone on January third.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thanks, thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Kennard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you have our December end news report. Um, I think we touched on a lot in there, I don't have too many updates. The only thing, uh, in, uh, Tom's, uh, State of Union, Union address, uh, the only thing he didn't mention, which we haven't really started yet, haven't talked about, but is also important, um, we just started looking at updating your subdivision and development ordinance and zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, especially zoning, as you guys know, that impacts a lot of, a lot of projects that you see, so, uh, that's something we'll work on throughout the year. We have some new staff that you just brought in, um, you know, we'll, we'll work with Brian and, uh, if we need to, uh, with Mike and his staff and team, and then, um, you know, at some point during the year next year, you will see some updates to your, to your ordinances that impact your subdivision and development ordinances. So some time to, to clean them up, tighten them up. Things have changed, I think, over the last, I don't know how long ago this was, maybe ten years ago.
Yeah, it's about time.
Yeah, and, um, um, the other thing I'd like to mention, and I know Mr. Feinberg, uh, is in the room, and, and Mr. McKee mentioned that, but, um, I'll be finishing up my fifteenth year here, and Mr. Feinberg is the one that put me in this seat, so I really appreciate everything that, uh, he stood by me and, and supported me. I was a little younger back then, a lot more hair, but, uh, I do tell that story a lot, he doesn't know that, but I think everybody here has heard the story that I owe a lot to, to Mr. Feinberg, so thank you.
Be careful what you say, my friend. Well, we're happy to have you here, and we think Gilmore does an exceptional job.
Thank you.
And by the way, and that's the key, that, that is the key to, uh, the way I think on this board, and I'm sure the rest of the board thinks the same way, because I never, uh, we never really have a lot of, uh, opposition or arguments about this, is that what we look for, regardless of anything else, we look for the best, best possible work product to come out of all our professionals and our, and our subcontractors, and, uh, and, you know, we, when somebody's not, uh, meeting the mark, we give them every opportunity to correct it, and then when they don't, we have to look to alternatives. So, uh, it's a pleasure to have you here as well, Craig. Okay, Tom, you got anything to say to us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, because the, uh, New Year's holiday falls on the day it does, which is Monday, the, January the second, uh, the reorg meeting for the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, January the third, at seven PM in this very room. Uh, we have already, uh, arranged for advertising for that meeting, because we got it wrong in the previous advertising. Also, the, uh, if I may, B on this list is a little disturbing, but I put it on there because I'd heard a rumor that we might be considering meeting on Thursday, January the fifth, so I thought I'd just bring it up and see what we're going to do with that meeting.
Can we just pay the bills at reorg?
We can.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion now.
So, um...
We are allowed to conduct regular business.
Yeah, we're allowed to talk, talk regular business, so, um...
The exact language is do the reorg, or the organization, i.e. voting for all your positions, and any other lawful business that comes before you, so.
Right, right, that's what it says, so.
Some of those lines.
Any objections to eliminating the three, the two days later?
None.
None.
Okay. None from here either. All right, so we'll, uh, we'll have our reorg on the third, we'll get through, uh, whatever business is left between now and the end of the year, and then we'll, um, we'll reconvene later.
Thank you.
All right, second round. One up.
Johnny.
Johnny.
It's the Johnny Show.
Wouldn't be the same without, it wouldn't be the same without the second round.
Always got to be a little time for me, Ken.
I know.
Okay. John Preo was six, seven, four Joseph Avenue, Warminster.
I questioned the guy on the lighting for the, um, the parks, and, about the warranty, and he said the poles that they put up with their lights that they're going to put in are twenty-five-year warranty, which is a pretty good deal, but he said the other poles that, ones that they were going to put up with, the wooden poles, would only be ten years. So to lose fifteen years of warranty might be beneficial to add, you know, maybe add the pole to that situation, to grab the extra fifteen years, so it's up to you guys to decide what's best, but I think that might not be a bad idea, you know, because what would the cost be in ten years to fix the, you know, seven or eight poles that they ought replace it, if it was only a ten-year warranty? So you gotta look at the, look at the math there. Um, the real reason why I, I came up, I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, uh, Hearst, the Hearst Building at the York Road, okay? I, I talked to Ken about it, I talked to a bunch of other people. Um, there's a lot of excitement about this company in this township that was here. Just to give you a little heads up, Hearst was an innovator in the automotive business. He invented, uh, the, the shifters for, for the, all the automakers had them, uh, AMC, the big three, Chrysler, General Motors, um, everybody, Ford used them, everybody used their shifters. Everybody as a kid wanted a Hearst shifter in their car. Um, they bought their clutches, they, uh, Hearst bought, brought the clutch program down to Warminster, so they put the Hearst, the Schaefer clutch program together. They used to go to all the tracks, they had free seminars, fixed their stuff, lifetime guarantees, um, designed some really cool, uh, stuff. Also, one of the really important innovations and ideas that, uh, they came up with was, uh, the jaws of life, which most people don't realize, that now all the fire departments and everybody is using this guy's idea. He first designed it to cut people out of Indy cars, um, with, uh, set up a five-thousand-pound jaw and cut the pipes and things like that, so, um, that was developed here in Warminster. A lot of, um, cars that were, uh, like, very well-sold after cars were Hearst cars. Uh, there was a car, uh, came out in nineteen sixty-five, was called the Hemi Under Glass. It was a rear-engine Barracuda, which they tested right outside, um, the, the, uh, shop out there, and it's on the internet, you can go back and look at it, if you look up, uh, Hemi Under Glass, uh, 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 Warminster, you'll see the old, uh, picture of it. What, uh, a couple of other things, he was also, um, in the New York Times, um, the guy was very well-known all across the country. Um, they also, here in Warminster, got together and, uh, created a, the United States Race Team. Back in the early sixties and seventies, drag racing and stuff like that was becoming a worldwide phenomenon, would have more people show up at a drag strip on the weekend than would a football game. So, um, and some of these guys were making, in the areas of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, which they state in some of the articles, that Will Chamberlain didn't even make that much money. So it was a big thing, and a lot of, um, a lot of things, important things happened over there. Um, he used to live in Warminster, he came from, uh, Glenside, lived here in fifty-nine, opened up the building, and continued to do that through the early part of the seventies when his partner bailed out and sold his stock to AMF, and then he, they offered him a board seat, and then they didn't do it. So he ended up losing his position in the company, and then ended up, uh, and he lived in Huntington Valley, which was real close. Um, there's, uh, uh, people, like, there's a couple, uh, people that were involved in it, they called her Miss Golden Shifter, she was, uh, Linda Vaughn, she's still around, you know, a lot of people remember, kids in the neighborhood used to go there, get stickers, knock on the door, we used to bring shifters over, they would rebuild them for free, you know, um, a lot of things like that. So, yeah, I was thinking that maybe we could, maybe get our historical society possibly together and get some kind of a plaque maybe put up out there. Um, there's still a lot of people in the neighborhood who used to work there, um, you know, uh, that, that are around, and I know the names, so we can always go back and ask them. Um, there's still a lot of people that have stuff from the building, and, you know, I think it would be, uh, good that we have, uh, at least try to do something for that, uh, building, because history's not a lot in Warminster. We have Craven Hall, we have the Fitch thing, and you have the astronauts, which is a big thing, but in the car business, he was like an astronaut, he was huge, he was, you know, uh, well-known all over, went all over the country, um, and raced in other, went to England and raced over there, took his whole teams over, and it all started here in Warminster, it actually started in Glenside, but only for a couple of years until they bought the building here and developed.
Wasn't that building where Double H Plastics is now?
That's where it was.
That's where we're talking about, yeah, and they had the Hearst sign right out front, there's pictures of it, you can go, and if you do the research, you know, and Hearst is still, uh, is still in, in business today in name because of all the other stuff, but he actually ended up, uh, he ended up killing himself at the end, you know.
It was a tragic ending.
Yeah, he lost, he lost his, uh, you know, he lost everything, everything he built up and all the movement, you know, and I guess he, he just, uh, couldn't take it, so. But, uh, I think he's, he's, it's a worthy spot to, uh, maybe do something down the road, and I think it would cost a lot of money, maybe we could just get the people to do donations and stuff like that, to raise money for the plaque, so it doesn't cost the township. But there's a lot of people, Dennis Curbin and a bunch of other people that all worked there, uh, Marty Danko, he's pretty big, locally known, he worked there as, you know, designers and engineers, so a lot of people out of there came here.
Yeah, I remember, uh, working in a gas station in nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, when I was in high school, and everybody had a Hearst shifter in their car, the Chevels, all of them, and...
Yeah, they did a lot of stuff for automatics.
Yeah, and then even when...
They had the Hearst shifter, the GTO.
Yep, GTOs.
Like for the Monkeys that was in that car, a lot of different stuff, so it all came out of here.
Right.
All the, all the shifters were built right in Warminster and sent to these, uh, the original OEM manufacturer for Ford, Chrysler, GM, American Motors, everybody wanted the shifters, even Volkswagen used them, so.
Yep, I, I would say, uh, that's a piece of Warminster history that's been forgotten. You can see all that stuff on the website, like, Street Road was what, a two-lane highway, I think, at that time, when they...
Yes, it was, and, and...
He would race, he would, uh, do demonstrations right in the parking lot of the, of the factory, I believe.
Yeah, on the side of it, but if you, if you just think of the impact that the jaws of life has done for, for everywhere in the world, everybody's using it now.
Yep.
Or has fashioned some kind of design that's similar or, or actually better, but, uh, that, just that one innovation was, uh, a big thing. I did, what I did is, I didn't want to print out a bunch of, uh, stuff, but I, I just got a bunch, that, that I thought would be important, maybe give some idea to, if you gave it to someone, that they could read it and, uh, maybe, um, make a decision whether we want to do something or not.
Somebody right back there having a conversation, they might want to look at that, right? Tom?
Pass that over.
Sure, thank you.
I'm going to pass that over to Jess.
Doesn't have to, give it to Ken.
She's not listening.
He, he gets it done. Ken gets it done.
I'll get it, yeah, I agree, you know what, and I, I, um...
It's something where, you know...
We had, John and I had talked about this, and I remember even when I was in grade school, we used to have stickers, you know, STP and Hearst shifters, you know?
Yeah, Adam, yeah.
And, uh, yeah, then when I went to work for the gas station, yeah, and I think, uh, it is part of Warminster's history, and, um, maybe we should recognize that, actually, I think we should.
I definitely, I agree.
There's still some people that were in that organization that are still, um, alive too, so if we ever did any kind of dedication, maybe we could reach out, maybe they'd come out.
Yeah.
You know, Linda Vaughn's still alive, and, uh, the guy, Sox and Martin, Buddy Martin's still alive. They all came through here, Bill Jenkins came through here, he lived in Malburn, they all worked out of this Hearst thing, you know, so.
Yeah.
It was a pretty cool part of it.
I think...
You know, we shouldn't forget about it. We do, we do the things, the Centrifuge and the astronauts and all that, so. And this here was huge for, for probably, you know, 30, 40 years and still is today.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, John, thanks. Thank you, thank you.
Great information, thank you.
I think we should have a look into it.
Very precious, very precious.
Yeah, same to you. All right. Jess, while you weren't paying attention, we got a job for you.
It's a historical society job.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll see you on the 3rd. Everyone be safe, enjoy time with your families and, and friends, and as always, you don't want to see the police chief on a, on a night when you made a mistake, so let's be smart. All right, thanks. Kathy?
Yes, I have some comments, Mr. Chair. First of all, wow, I'm blown away. This is probably the most, is the most productive meeting that I've had the honor to be a participant of, and I'd like to thank our incredible staff, our, all of our professionals and, and our colleagues because we all worked together to make this day so productive. In addition to passing a balanced budget with no tax increase, we are making major improvements in the township with the lighting in our parks. As a former coach, I have to say, I remember those days walking in the dark and it's, it's a safety issue and it's also, it improves our parks to where people will want to come, other leagues will want to participate, and there's nothing like playing under the lights. So, I want to thank everyone for that. Also, wanted to say thanks to our, again, our incredible staff for the police contract being done ahead of time through their negotiating with our, our chair and our staff. I want to thank the police for the give and take in the contract, also to our incredible chair, Ken Hayes, with his incredible negotiating skills, and everyone who was involved in that to get us to this point. Also, would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a Happy New Year. And I'd like to wish all of our residents a very happy, prosperous, and healthy New Year. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Kathy. Mark?
Drop the mic.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, it's that time of year again, I always don the Santa hat for, for Christmas. In fact, we bought these when my son was born and he'll be 30 this year, so I, I know it looks a little rough, but we refuse, yeah, we refuse to buy new ones, but I just want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah and a very healthy and Happy New Year and be safe out there. And as Ken said, the chief is never looking for any overnight guests, so.
No.
Take an Uber, they're cheap enough, or get a friend to drive you.
Great, thanks, Mark.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish for my fellow board members and staff as well.
Yes.
Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you.
Same here. It's, it's been, it's been a really a great year. And Janice?
I agree. I, I just, it, it has been a great year, it's been a lot of, a learning experience, it's been fun working with everybody, it's a great professional team, and it's nice that we're all working together, and politics really isn't in it. It's, we're public servants and I think we all recognize that, and, and we benefit from that mentality, working best for what's best for Warminster, so that's great.
Thanks, Janice.
I want all of our Warminster residents to have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, just please be safe, don't drink and drive, you know, let's keep it safe. If you need a ride, give us a holler.
Thanks, Janice.
That's fine. I'll come pick you up.
I've thought about that a few times.
Yeah, that's fine, I've got a 15-passenger van, I'll come pick everybody up.
Be like the Jenny down the shore, right? Just scoop everybody up.
Yeah.
Better than the chief scooping them up, that's for sure.
Yep. Next?
Yes, Janice, or I mean Judy, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted, one more announcement that I forgot to mention, and that is, since we're making this a destination town now, I want to tell you that the Warminster Parks lighting system will be helped immensely if you attend the Warminster Parks and Recreation Wine and Cheese on February 10th, to be held at the Ben Wilson Center. Contact, it's the Wine and Cheese Bingo. So, it's a lot of fun, and the reason I'm announcing it so early is because usually by January, the tickets have all been sold out, so time to call rec at 215-443-5428 and get your tickets.
And you're always looking for sponsors too, anyone that wants to pony up, any businesses out there, whatever.
There you go.
Want to pony up there.
All businesses are allowed to sponsor.
Absolutely.
So, that's it. And I want to say again, I'm really thrilled that this contract is up, that we've had such a productive year, that we've had, Tom earlier said, I said, you look tired, Tom. He said, don't worry about me, Judy, and I thought, the problem is, we've gone through so many managers in such a short amount of time, I'm afraid of losing another one, that's all, but we hope you stay well and stay with us, Tom, because Tom and Ken work together so well, and the, the, having the contract done and soon the other contracts, I hope, look like they're going to be done. We're having a good year, we're staying on top of things, staying within our budget. We're going to eventually be out of trouble, but it takes a lot of work and a lot of years, so thank you all, have a, a very nice, happy holiday for everybody and a great New Year.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Tom, it's probably a good time to ask for some more money.
Well, then I should too, because I do all the work.
Cut.
Yeah.
How did you feel my lips move?
She's fast, she's fast, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's been a pleasure this year, honestly. We really did make some real progress. I mean, the last couple of years, we made progress, but this year was really huge. We've got a, you know, we're getting a handle on things and, and to Janice's point, it's, it's all about community service, and that's why we're here.
And we'll have the same...
And everybody has the same objective, right? And that's to benefit the residents.
Yep.
And, and not ourselves or, or other agendas. So, again, thank you, everyone, have a great and Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah.
Motion to adjourn.
Quanza, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much.